Good evening. At this time, I would entertain a motion from council to come out of executive session.
So move, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Broll. Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Gregory. All those in favor of coming out of executive session, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Thank you. With that, we would like to now call our meeting to order for the November 28th meeting of Aiken City Council. We will start with an invocation and a pledge for those who would care to join us, and Roger is certainly welcome to.
Let's pray. Father, in this season where we remember those things we're thankful for, we're thankful for the freedoms that we have, and we're thankful for our country, Lord, where we have men and women who are serving to protect those freedoms. We ask that your blessings and protection would be upon them. We ask that your protecting hand would be upon men and women who serve our city, who offer service in many ways, our public safety through all of our city employees. As they work with our citizens and our public, may they always reflect the best of what we have in our city. We ask that your blessings would be upon this meeting, that everything that is said and done would be done so in a way that is pleasing to you. We ask for wisdom for this council as we make decisions for the future of our city. In your name we pray. Amen. And I think we have Major Mills with us today. I'm going to ask him if he'd come up and lead us in our pledge. Major, it's good to see you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Major. We would like to go over the guidelines for our meetings at this time. Meetings are a public forum in which many opinions are expressed and the business of the city must be conducted. As such, disciplined, honorable, and professional decorum is paramount. Courteous and respectful communication is expected. During the non-agenda items for the public portion of the agenda, speakers will be given three minutes to address council about any issues they are concerned about. The total time for this agenda item is not to exceed 30 minutes. During the public hearing portion for each of the agenda items, all questions and statements from the public shall be directed to the chair. If you wish to speak, if you raise your hand, I will certainly recognize you. Please approach the podium and state your name and address. In order to allow an opportunity for everyone who wishes to address council, speakers should limit their comments to the subject being discussed. Each speaker will be given five minutes to address an issue. They may only address an issue once unless questions from council are posed to the speaker. So thank you ahead of time for following our guidelines. At this time, I'd like to recognize our mayor pro tem, Councilman Walts, for additions or deletions to the agenda. Councilman?
Good evening. There are no additions or deletions tonight, Your Honor. Form that as a motion.
Very good. I have a motion for the agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman Price. All those in favor of accepting the agenda as presented, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Thank you. The minutes were given to council before our meeting for their review. At this time, I would entertain a motion for the acceptance of the minutes. All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Diggs. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Broll. All those in favor of the minutes as presented, please raise your hand. Okay, and that's unanimous. Thank you. Next, we move to presentations. We have one presentation tonight, something that we certainly feel is special and speaks to a great partnership that happened during COVID, addressing issues and uncertainty. And I'd like to read it this time into the record. Whereas in March of 2020, the COVID-19 pandemic posed historic threats to the health and safety of the world. Our nation and the local community and social distancing mandates from the state of South Carolina forced a closure or extreme limitation of all but state-approved essential businesses. And whereas the Aiken City Council, Office of the City Manager, and the Economic Development Department feared the impact of the health crisis along with the restrictions placed on the small business owners of Aiken, and saw an urgent need to quickly offer assistance that could help retain the city's long-term economic vitality. Whereas the city of Aiken therefore committed to create a COVID-19 emergency loan fund that could quickly provide a lifeline to business owners by providing $10,000 loans with payments deferred for a six-month at a low interest rate of 2% to help fund and facilitate that effort, the city sought community partners to join in the effort. Whereas the Aiken Chamber of Commerce, the Aiken Corporation, and Security Federal Bank all immediately agreed to take part in the program and commit, along with the city, a total of $1 million in loan guarantees to back the program. And Security Federal Bank additionally agreed to review credit applications, qualifying borrowers, and administer the loan portfolio over its 30-month repayment lifespan at no cost. Whereas this program, due to the full support of the program sponsors, was created, fully approved, funded, and operating in just four days, making assistance available weeks before the federal PPP loan program and extended unemployment benefits were first available to local business owners and impacted employees. Whereas experts warned that this kind of emergency loan program could see defaults as high as 35% of the borrowers due to the stresses the business owners could face after receiving assistance. Despite the dire warnings, 47 total loans were made, and as the program has now come to a close with all of those loans being fully repaid with zero defaults. Think about that. Now, therefore, we, Mayor Rick N. Osborne and the Aiken City Council, do hereby proclaim our city's enduring appreciation to the loan program partners to include the Aiken Chamber of Commerce, the Aiken Corporation, and Security Federal Bank, as well as the hard-working loan recipients who so consensiously repaid their obligations. It's signed by all of council, and I know we have representatives here from Security Federal, the Aiken Chamber, and Aiken Corp. If y'all guys could join me up front, I'd love to. If we could give them a hand for stepping up in a big way for our community. I'm going to come down and present this, and I guess we can all arm wrestle over a celebration toast. Who gets it? Or we'll get everybody a copy. But before I do, I would like to take liberty and make some comments. Personal note, and I'm sure other people would also. This is probably one of the things I'm most proud of that we've had since I've been serving in this role because, as we all know, government doesn't move real fast sometimes. I think we can all say that. This idea came up on a Monday, Tuesday in a roundtable as to what we can do to help because PPP was not described at that time. People and businesses were just uncertain. It was an incredibly uncertain time. And so we made the conscious decision that maybe economic development money needed to be put to economic retention. And from that idea, we reached out to our partners, Security Federal, who's always there for us, who just went above and beyond the Chamber and Aiken Corp. And we came up with that $1 million to backstop the loans. We were all on a percentage basis willing to say, we're going to lend this money. If the businesses are not able to pay it, we're going to be the backstop for it. And what a testament, I think, to those businesses. A lot of them, it was a $10,000 loan. I know I've had multiple businesses that took it, said, you know, it wasn't just the money. More than that, it was the fact that I felt like I wasn't alone in this thing. And until the federal government kind of got the guidelines and everything set up. So to all the entities and the boards that you represent, we thank, we're grateful. I would say we're grateful for the support and help of this program. And Tim O'Brien, I know you worked hard on these microloans and along with the bank. Thank you and the staff for your help on that and our city manager. But it's one of the things I think council can really be proud of. So I'd like to come down with this and at least get a photo. And if anybody wants to make some comments, we'll certainly allow that as well.
If anybody wants to make any comments, you're welcome to.
All right, very good. We now move down to the non-agenda items from the public. This is total time limited to 30 minutes, and each speaker is limited to three minutes. It allows you an opportunity, if you want to speak about something that's not an agenda item. This is your opportunity. So we open that public time up at this time. Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
Good evening. Debbie Brown, Do It Right, Mallard Lake subdivision. This morning's paper was startling to me in particular because at the point where there was a car crash at Ron Point at the intersection of Coker Springs and Coker Springs and Whiskey. It happened that my husband was playing a gig there the night before. So it really brought home to me the safety issue that apparently has gone on since 2019 at that intersection. And boy, was there an outpouring of comments on Nextdoor and Facebook today about that with many, many suggestions ranging from inflatables to ballards. So I did a little investigating today, and I can see where it's kind of an interesting point where there's two problems, really. It's the lights and the intersection configuration itself of the brick wall. The lights being attached to the brick wall. But when I went into the outdoor lighting codes for South Carolina, it specifically calls for downlighting encased. And probably that's something that should be looked into. The problem seems to be that they're too high, and as people come towards them, it appears that there's cars coming at them, and they veer. So obviously, most people don't do that, but enough do. So the other thing is, it would be very easy to change the configuration of that intersection. And whether that's a city jurisdiction or a state jurisdiction, to me, as a citizen, it doesn't matter because there's been significant, over and over, repeated things. And I would think that our first job is to protect the citizens from that happening over and over. One other thing is that it's a historic intersection. It's an introduction on that end of town to Aiken. So, you know, it doesn't do any good to leave it looking like this. I mean, this is the second time in a couple of weeks. This time, they went all the way through it. The week before, it was denting it. So anyway, I'm going to ask the council to look into this specifically because it's enough. And really, when you think of it, any change to the intersection could be covered by the South Carolina DOT. It's not a, but you got to get it on the list. I can see that there's a waiting list for this stuff. So anyway, I'm hoping that you all solve this sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Any other comments for the non-agenda items? Thank you. Moving down to old business. Item number one is approval of appointments and discussion of appointees of various city boards, commissions, and committees, including the Recreation Commission. And I will recognize Mr. Beanbow at this time. Good evening, Mr. Beanbow.
Good evening. We have Charles Cummings, appointment to the Recreation Commission.
For council tonight is the appointment of Charles Cummings to the Recreation Commission. Is there a motion?
So move, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Broll. Is there a second?
Seconds.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman Price. Any comments from the audience? Comments or questions from council? Hearing none, all those in favor of this approval, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Thank you. At this time, I'd open up the floor to council to make nominees to be considered at our next public meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I have two. I will be reappointing Clayton Clarkson to the Planning Commission and Lori Comshaw to the Recreation Commission.
All right. Thank you. Any other nominations for consideration next meeting?
Mayor, I'd like to reappoint Mr. Pete Messina to the Planning Commission.
Good. Thank you. All right. Any others? Okay, thank you. We move down to item number two in our old business. This is a second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to annex 4.72 acres on Silver Bluff Road and Village Green Boulevard and zone the area planned residential PR and amend the concept plan for the Village at Woodside. By title, this is an ordinance to annex property owned by Candido Vertiega and to zone the same planned residential PR and approve amendments to the Village at Woodside concept plan. Is there a motion? All right. Thank you, Mr. Jared O. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Walts. Comments from staff?
Thank you. The applicant is requesting annexation of 4.72 acres with zoning as planned residential and revision of the concept plan to expand the borders at the Village at Woodside. Silver Bluff Development Company wants to construct a 47,270-square-foot specialty store and seven smaller 1,400-square-foot shops with two out parcels bordering Village Green Boulevard. Three proposed ingress and egress points with one full access off of Village Green Boulevard, one right in, right out, and one full access on Silver Bluff Road. The developer's been in discussions with city staff also, including public safety, regarding improvements to the access area adjacent to Public Safety Station 4. Should council approve this project? Currently, as noted in the concept plan dated February 14th, 2022, the Village at Woodside has approval for 229,000 square feet of commercial development. The developer's requesting that 20,000 square feet of the commercial allowance assigned to the assisted living facility common area and 14,000 square foot to the commercial allowance assigned to the future Village Inn instead be assigned to the residential unit allowance with a maximum of 318 units. This residential maximum will remain unchanged. These revisions are approved with an additional 26,530 commercial square foot allotment. This will accommodate a new specialty store, shops, and out parcels, and allow a 20,000-square-foot expansion of the village medical offices and potential expansion of existing commercials, shops. Since this is in the planned residential area, a concept plan must be reviewed by the Planning Commission and approved by city council. Council has complete discretion over the concept plan. Also, projects in the planned residential zone must meet the criteria set forth in Section 4.2.6.G of the zoning ordinance. The Planning Commission reviewed this request and approval of the concept plan to revision to expand the borders. And the conditions are noted and were read into the record at first reading. Council did approve this ordinance on first reading at their September 26th meeting. At that time, council asked that second reading of the ordinance not be set until the developer could provide renderings and elevations for the project and have a meeting with affected residents of Woodside and the Village at Woodside, which occurred on Monday, October 17th, with a follow-up meeting with some adjacent property owners occurring the week of November 14th. The elevations and updated site plan showing the footprint of the grocery store moved closer to Village Green Boulevard, and the installation of sound barriers near residents on Magnolia Lake Circle have been included in this agenda packet. And it is before council for second reading and public hearing of this ordinance to annex 4.72 acres with planned residential zoning and approval of the concept plan revision to expand the borders of the Village at Woodside with the conditions recommended by the Planning Commission.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Beanbow. We're going to open up comments from the audience at this time. If you wish to speak, raise your hand, and I'll recognize you and press if you will, and then I'll get... Good evening, sir. I just got your letter also, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Preston Rahay, R-A-H-E, and I live at 348 Magnolia Lake Court in Woodside. Once again, I'm speaking to you in opposition to the Silver Bluff Shopping Center with a strip mall being proposed by the Silver Bluff Development Company. Their proposal of the annexation of Mr. Vertiega's property into the Village at Woodside's planned residential zoning is a blatant disregard of the city's zoning regulation, and it must be defeated. By law, the PR zoning requires that limited non-residential uses must primarily serve the residents of the PR zone. Now, with 339 parking spaces, a 47,000-square-foot grocery store, seven-in-line stores all facing Silver Bluff Road, it is obviously designed to serve far more than the 318 residents of the village. The lack of required 20% open space in this 4.7-acre parcel would even disqualify it from a planned commercial zoning. In short, an approval of this would poorly reflect on the city council's credibility. While the developer did meet with concerned citizens, as requested by the city council, the drawings given to us at the time and duplicated on pages 60 and 61 of their second reading submittal are wrong. For example, they show that my house is 100 feet from the 75-foot-wide utility buffer. In fact, my house is 50 feet from the 60-foot-wide utility buffer. They also grossly exaggerate the foliage of an existing tree buffer between the utility line and their sound barrier. I will not only be able to clearly see the grocery store and sound barrier, but also to hear the truck traffic and the pharmacy drive-through traffic all day long. Finally, the developer failed to address the safety concerns of the Magnolia Lake Court and Pinnocks Farm residents. Now, while we live in a gated community, they have declined to install any security fence that would protect the residents from intruders and burglars who would use the parking lot to slip into homes at night. This has already become a problem in other areas of Woodside that are adjacent to unfenced access points. In summary, the proposed Silver Bluff strip mall clearly violates the city's zoning ordinances, and is also incompatible with the residential nature of the village, Pinnock Farms, and Woodside. With the added traffic light, two entrances from Silver Bluff Road, 339 parking spaces, and a large footprint, it is clearly designed to serve more than the Village at Woodside. The city has never, never approved a strip mall in the midst of or this close to existing residential areas. We respectfully ask you to reject the annexation and its inclusion into a planned residential zone. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilwomen, councilmen.
Thank you, Mr. Rahay. Yes, sir. Good evening.
Good evening, council, and thank you for your time. My name's Kent Baldwin. I'm here on behalf of Silver Bluff Development and Peach Properties. I live in Colleton Avenue here in Aiken, and I appreciate your consideration tonight. um, and Peach Properties. I live in Colton Avenue here in Aiken, and I appreciate your consideration tonight. Let me, uh, uh, just start briefly with, um, a little recap. As you know, our first reading was on September the twenty-sixth. Since that, since that time, we've taken time and opportunity to meet with the surrounding and affected neighbors, listen to their concerns, and refine our plans to address and mitigate these concerns as best we can. Our first meeting with these residents took place on October seventeenth, as Mr. Beedenbow explained in the opening remarks, where we shared the elevations and the site plan. The primary takeaways from that meeting were the following: uh, the proximity and buffering of the proposed, uh, area for the grocery, sound concerns, lighting concerns, and security concerns. Uh, after the meeting, we worked with our engineers and consultants to mitigate these concerns and improve our plans. The site plan was reworked and supplemental information was gathered that was shared with the most impacted neighbors on November the fifteenth. The changes to the plan and the information are, are as follows. The proposed grocery and related circulation drives were modified to now show a seventy-five foot natural and landscape buffer area. If you could go back to the site plan, uh, that was, uh, the first, uh, graphic, um, will show this area. This is in addition to the fifth, the seventy-five foot power line easement. It is a seventy-five foot easement. It's not sixty feet as Mr. Ray has, has just indicated. Fifty feet of that will be left undisturbed. The trees and the landscape in that area are thirty to fifty foot mixture of hardwoods and evergreens. It's very dense. Some of you have seen this. Um, it, it, uh, is lush and, uh, it will do a, a, uh, good job at mitigating view as well as sound. The remaining twenty-five feet that was added will be landscaped at the, in conjunction with the construction of the property, uh, with landscape buffering plantings. The vehicle and circulation drives, as well as the building, were moved to make this accommodation. In addition, the eastern side of the circulation to the right on that, on that site plan, closer to the firehouse, uh, which is where the pharmacy would be, uh, landscape buffering plantings will be planted along the circulation drives in that area. We did a cross-section view. If you could switch, switch to the next graphic that really shows both horizontally and vertically, you know, what is going on here. So the, the dimensions are actually to the home. They're not to the property line. The building, as you can see, to the, um, power line easement has been moved. And we've depicted graphically in scale the size of the, the plantings and the buffering that exist. There's a twelve-foot, um, ten to twelve-foot sound mitigation fence barrier that would go in that area. If you go back to the site plan, point out where that is. The sound concerns, uh, we shared these site plans with a sound mitigation specialist, acoustic block, and they amended the plan to show, uh, a sound attenuation fence as recommended by them that would be ten to twelve feet high at the edge of the circulation drive. And it's anticipated that the decibel reduction on the immediate other side of this fence would be fifty-five to sixty-five percent in perceived sound and ninety to ninety-seven percent in sound pressure level, which is an actual objective measure of sound reduction. That fencing, if you go back to the site plan, um, wraps around the circulation drive in the area closest to these residents, as well as the area where there will be some circulation traffic. Uh, lighting concerns. The design for both the parking area lighting and building lighting incorporates state-of-the-art LED lighting and illuminates the property line between zero and point five lumens at the property line. The security fence and fencing, uh, it does exist. It's in good shape. Um, there's a thousand feet of six-foot-high chain link fence from the gate at the firehouse. Another thousand feet of no-climb fence with barbed wire on top. Um, they're in good and serviceable order. The gate had been repaired, had been, uh, knocked off. It's repaired and locked. Um, so it's, it's very difficult, um, for somebody to get from the village to this power line area.
So there, there is a security fence. That was, that was a concern I had.
Absolutely. There, there is one. There's over two thousand feet of it, thousand feet being six-foot chain link, and another thousand feet of five-foot no-climb fence with a barbed wire, uh, at the top of it. And the topography in this area is so challenging that, you know, vehicular or even pedestrian access would be very difficult.
All right.
Okay, the, you know, the other thing to keep in mind here is this is part of a three thousand acre development, which is Woodside. It's all planned residential. We've chosen to concentrate, you know, some of the lifestyle, recreational, and commercial elements of the development in the village for convenience, better land planning, better land use. We think this is the right plan for this area, and we appreciate your support tonight.
While Mr. Baldwin's up here, does anyone have any questions?
I do.
Councilwoman Price?
Mr. Baldwin, was this mentioned in the meetings you conducted with the residents? The fence?
Yes.
And the height and width?
It was, yes. Actually provided a plan that showed them where it was, and we discussed, uh, the fence along that entire area.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Baldwin.
Anyone else?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
Hello. My name is Marie McFadden. I live at one-one-seven-two Richardson's Lake Road in Aiken. My concern about this, um, property that's being proposed is that for those who live in that area, I would think most would agree that Silver Bluff is already a very, very busy road. And that intersection where the light is right at Woodside and right goes Woodside Village across to Richardson Lake and Silver Bluff is a very, very busy intersection. So the apartments that are being built in there now aren't even occupied yet. So when they're occupied, you'll have that much more traffic. When this new thing is built, you'll have that much more traffic. And recently, a large, very large, storage facility was just built right across from Pin Oak. So my concern for living right on Richardson Lake Road is when all of this comes together, this area is gonna wind up like Whiskey Road or something. And those of us who live out that way, away from town, chose that area because it's rural and there aren't businesses there. So I just have a very, I'm very concerned about all of this coming together all at once and how the, our area is gonna be impacted. Because once it's there, it's there. It's not going away. So, thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Ms. McFadden. Yes. Dr. Veldman. Good evening.
I especially wanna say I'm happy to see Ed back. And I wanna thank Ms. Gregory for her help in, uh, coming to the, some of the meetings, whatever. It was very helpful. I live in the estate section of Woodside adjacent to the planned shopping center with the grocery and strip mall. I oppose this development based on its scope and scale and the impact it would have on the surrounding residential area. The grocery is two point four times the size of the twenty thousand square foot grocery included in the amendment that you approved in February for this village concept plan. It did not have an attract, it didn't have an attached strip mall either. The original twenty thousand square foot grocery was included in the Village at Woodside plans since two thousand and five. A group of over twenty concerned neighbors met with the developers and voiced their concerns over a poor design. And it was a poor design. Councilwoman Gregory and Assistant City Manager Lotton attended this meeting. Concerns included the size of the project, the placement of the grocery on the, versus the boundary with Woodside neighbors, inadequate noise buffering, light pollution, increased traffic on Silver Bluff Road and Village Green Boulevard, and the adequacy of the detention pond and the stormwater runoff system to Woodside and Magnolia Lake. Actually, all the stormwater that goes out of that detention pond goes through Magnolia Lake. The developers made modest improvements. They did try. I will give them credit. It's a better plan now. And they met with the neighbors, neighborhood representatives, Councilwoman Gregory, and the placement of the grocery store was moved. Unfortunately, it was moved about from me to you, Mr. Mayor. That's all. Twenty-five feet. Neighbors, the neighbors represented seventy-five to a hundred feet, and we got twenty-five feet from you to me. The, uh, we also talked about a, a permeable surface for the parking lot. There's a whole lot of hardscape that's going into the apartment complex, and it's going into this potential development. A permeable parking lot would be a, a help with the stormwater issue. Not the solution, but a help. The traffic study hasn't been completed, and I think our previous speaker was right. There are gonna be some significant traffic issues, not only in the Village at Woodside, on Village Green Boulevard, but on Silver Bluff Road. A new significant issue was identified and introduced because the developer decided to put a drive-through pharmacy right next to the Woodside neighbors. Cars must drive past the drive-through, turn around, and then come through the drive-through. This introduces sound and light pollution from a constant stream of traffic from nine AM to nine PM. Think about, you know, the Kroger drive-through pharmacy, you know, you get that idea. The neighbors would rather not have the, the, uh, drive-through on that side of the building. It would be a positive not to because we just work to get traffic away from there. There was some discussion of sound attenuating, uh, uh, material fencing and along the side of the roadway, and the developer discussed a cheaper but less effective cedar fence. That turned into, we're gonna plant some shrubs. I told you before, as a licensed professional engineer, shrubbery and trees do not, do not attenuate sound. They may help with, you know, light, but they don't help with sound. The other thing I wanna talk about is I wanna talk about section two point three point one of the zoning ordinance, which describes the planned residential development district. And forgive me for reading a little bit of it, but I'll give emphasis. The planned residential district permits greater flexibility and more creative and imaginative design for the development of residential areas than is generally possible in other residential districts, while, emphasis, while potentially allowing a limited range of non-residential uses primarily serving the PR project. In exchange, the developer gives city council the control of the plan. The district promotes more economical and efficient use of the land, a harmonious variety of housing types, a higher level of amenities, and emphasis compatibility with surrounding uses. Reservation of natural features, open space, and the interconnection of sidewalks. The proposed shopping center with grocery strip mall does not contain a limited range of non-residential uses. It is a large-scale shopping center with a significant range of uses that is not compatible with the surrounding residential uses. The new traffic light, two new entrances off Silver Bluff, a three hundred and thirty-nine space parking lot, a large grocery strip mall, and future out parcels that we don't even know what they are. You know, whatever they can sell them for. They're clearly focused on serving more than even if you consider the PR all of Woodside. This is focused on servicing the whole area. City council should declare the proposed project in violation of this zoning ordinance. When the developer of the shopping center with the grocery strip mall sold the estate section of Woodside Lots, yes, they sold them. I don't remember them using "have a grocery store in your backyard" as a key selling point. I strongly oppose the, the approval, I strongly oppose approval of this development. It's simply too big and inappropriate for the place the developer is trying to put it. I actually had a lady that worked with me on this from Pin Oak Farms. Her name was Nina Maxwell. She got through with the meeting where the improvements were talked about, and she said, you know, they fixed the light. But they're trying to put too big a thing in the wrong place. And that kind of sums it up. And, uh, I hope you'll give my thoughts consideration. And, uh, you know, I've worked with the Woodside people many times before the developers there, but on this one, I can't get there with them. If they can only move that little twenty-five feet, I can't do it.
Thank you, Dr. Veldman. You know, yes, ma'am. Good evening.
My name is Margaret Mulling. Excuse me. I live at two-eleven Harvest Lane in Pin Oak Farms. I have, my main concern is the traffic, the view, the lighting, basically the whole complex. Um, and the key, John Veldman submitted key comments, one of which was the tree, but tree buffers shown in the artist renderings of the concept plan are euphemisms. They're either nonexistent or totally ineffective. That is probably the biggest concern I have. Um, at the first reading, I had a gentleman, we had a gentleman from Woodside say that if Pin Oak Farms ba- basically didn't like it, we could add a few trees on our berm. This should not be a cost to Pin Oak Farms. My feeling is there, if you drive up and down Silver Bluff, you'll find several areas. I came from Colorado where it's done beautifully by using tall, what I saw on the plan by trying to enlarge it online today, I'm not seeing this. If you have the tall trees with smaller shrubs in between, you can have a total wall totally blocking the view. Everybody knows there's a grocery store there. It could totally block the view. It would be a, more of a sound barrier, it would look more beautiful, et cetera, et cetera. In this development, if it's so non-intrusive and such a magnificent addition to the Pin Oak Farms and other surrounding areas, then you would have thought that Woodside and their initial plan would have plunked it right down smack dab in the middle of their homes, but they didn't because they know what it is. It's, okay. I, I believe it's on our website for Aiken. First of all, we've been, had been voted the best small town in the South. Excuse me. Not the best mini mall of America with a grocery store mecca. Bigger isn't always better. The, the town I come from, a suburb of, of Denver, there was easily road. And the attraction for easily road was driving up and down and, and the scenery and the trees, the foliage, the, the horses, the mules, the, the sheep that were in these yards and that. And within five years, none of that was there because it was replaced by all the people coming and wanting to build homes there, and it was all gone. And that is what I see is exactly happening here with this here. Do we really need this city to merely look at the revenue that this complex is going to generate? Or do you, as our representatives, do you have the courage to compromise with the neighboring areas? Pin Oak Farms, Gem Lakes, Woodside, everybody? Do you have the courage to work with us more, um, for what we need, which is not this huge conglomerate? How big is too big? Well, forty-seven thousand square foot store and three hundred plus parking lot is too big. Period. The city website says that we preserve our character. And also, they refer to the spirit of the town, not the revenue of the town. And I feel that this is what is being And I feel that this is what is being considered, not the well-being of the direct neighbors. What the lady had said, living on Richardson Lake Road, what they have said before, that's it. Pin Oak Farms nor any of the others, Pin Oak Farm owners should not have to add trees to our berm. The developers should be required to do, I had spoken to one of the developers' representatives after the last meeting, and I told them exactly what my feeling was. And my feeling is not just for Silver Bluff Road, but for like, the homes that, where they were talking about putting a fence, and I'm not sure what this gentleman all said, what, where this fence, et cetera, was going to go. But, but nobody wants to also look at an ugly fence, okay? The trees, at least, would be pretty to look at, and hopefully would break some of the sound barriers. Gentlemen at the first reading from Woodside made us, to me, a snide remark that Pin Oak Farms should be owners, should be happy that this monstrosity was being built, because it was going to increase the value of our homes. So I was wondering if somebody could get his name and number so that when we're ready to sell, we can call him, because it sounds like he's really excited about buying, so he could look at this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Mulling. Cory. Good evening.
My name's Cory Harper. I'm at 1528 Pine Log Road. And I would love to discuss this. I am in no means a business person nor a professional. However, I have worked for the last 10 years in the Woodside Professional Center, right outside of Woodside. We endured the three, over three years of construction for putting in two traffic lights and a third lane. That was egregious, to be quite honest. It was very difficult to go through there, to work there, and not only to live there. I don't live there, I live on Pine Log Road, but I did have to travel through there for those three years during that arborist construction for those third lane and the two lights that were put in. The second reason why I'm here is actually several. Hopefully, I'll remember them all. She made a great point about Aiken as the great small town. The village also touts itself as being a southern living, southern living class. Putting a strip mall outside of the village will definitely diminish the southern living class. Unless you, we know what the stores will be, if they're going to be Crate and Barrel, Black and White, Williams Sonoma, Pandora. If they're going to be those kind of stores there, that's a whole different story. I don't think there was, in my own opinion, a need for a grocery store. Is there a desire? There is. Of course, people said, I know, I had put out on Facebook, I would like someone to school me on why there is a need for a grocery store. And most of the people that decided to pipe up lived in Jackson or Beach Island. They're coming from that end, and they don't want to go to Publix, because it's too busy on Whiskey Road, and they certainly don't want to go to Food Lion, because it's another two miles down the road. It would be very convenient for them. So that is certainly people, servicing people far outside of the Aiken area. A 47,000-foot, that's insane. A specialized grocer that you can go get a bouquet for your mom, a filet, and some candied pecans, that would be delightful. Something specialized, something nice, something the class of a southern living home community. And probably on my part, personal part, if I can, if I can step over here for just a minute and point out, I wanted to ask. So, I want people to know the back end. So, is this where the water retention pond is when you're back behind you? And then, and so this would be the back end then of the grocery store?
Cory. Cory, you need to, for the sake of the video, yeah, I will.
Is that the fire station? And then, in the middle, then this is really straight? Is there one? That's really, okay. Then, okay, so this is the water retention. My personal, I may not mean anything to anybody else, but I know in the proposed-
Cory, use the microphone, so you can be on the-
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
In the proposed plan, granted, long time ago, there was for a grocer. And I think people were, but there is a nature trail around the village. And that, in our family, we use that every single day. Hundreds of people use that nature trail every week, hundreds. And it's the only place in Aiken outside of Hopland Farms, or if you go to the woods, maybe you can get away from the, to the traffic, get away from the traffic. But it cuts, it cuts out a significant portion of that nature trail. And that is value, not only to the people of the village, but to the people that live there, such as Pin Oak, Colleton, myself, who lives down on Pine Log. I completely enjoy the village the way it is. Not that I'm not a proponent of growth, I certainly am. But like I said, to go back to my first point, is that I've worked on Silver Bluff Road for the last, since 2013. And I know the traffic intimately that is there. And adding a almost 400-car parking lot? Where is the traffic study to, that's going to hold? If they expect to have that many cars at one moment, to have that many parking spaces at one moment, Silver Bluff cannot. I, I'm just a person, I'm not a developer. But I work there, I'm in and out of that, my own parking lot, four, five, six times a day. And I have to sit there and wait for traffic anywhere between a minute to two minutes coming from the village in Woodside or coming from the Woodside Executive Park that way. Therefore, having that many cars added into that mix, I personally cannot see without it being an absolute danger zone. It was already mentioned that intersection between Richardson Lake and Village Green is a death trap. It's better than it was four years ago, before the construction, because that light did make a difference. However, it is, it is still very dangerous. You cannot see when you're at Richardson the road. You cannot see to your left, and you cannot see to your right, you cannot. And having, adding that many cars to Silver Bluff is just insane. I can't, I, I don't know if city council has even the ability to tell them no, but we need to be able to restructure this.
Cory, Cory, that's six minutes.
Like I said, a specialty grocery store is, what's that?
So that's six minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm terribly sorry. But like I said, I hope you consider redoing that whole thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, yes, ma'am. Good evening.
Hello. My name's Michelle Campbell. I live in Woodside at 139 Balfour Court. My husband and I live there, and my in-laws live in the village, and they're elderly, in their 80s. So I'm here on behalf of all of us, and we are strongly in favor of the grocery store. Our belief is that responsible growth is the key to improvement of community. As we face growth, and we continue to grow, which is inevitable, we need to meet the needs of the local population. We've got the developments at Anderson Pond, the apartments, the mall over by Publix. There's more demand on the existing grocery stores, which in my opinion are already very crowded. I'm at Publix all the time picking up prescriptions for my in-laws, and that parking lot can be crazy, Krogers can be crazy. I feel like we could use another grocery store. I'm sure 20 years ago, when they were proposing 20,000-square-foot grocery store, maybe back then grocery stores could, maybe now they need a bigger store to, to make a profitable business. I don't know why it increased so much, but apparently that's what this grocery store is requiring. We would love the convenience, and my in-laws are especially excited about a drive-through pharmacy, which would greatly simplify all of our lives. It's not known at this time what the grocery store is. However, knowing the quality and appearance of what has been developed so far by Woodside, we feel fortunate to have a developer with a proven record of attractive, quality construction and to develop this lot. I am also confident we will use the shops attached to the grocery store to serve the locals based on the development they had in the village. The possibility of an unknown entity taking this property and using it for something less desirable, I believe, would be a huge, terrible mistake and a huge miss opportunity by this council. My husband and I have lived in Denver, Chicago, Washington, D.C. We've seen these issues come up, and we've seen terrible mistakes made that affected the community in a negative way of things we didn't anticipate being put in. Our family is also originally from the Midwest. We're Kansans, and I'm from a town that benefited from development from a major university. But my husband and his parents were in a small town in western Kansas where they, the growth was nonexistent and stagnant. And I know, I feel bad for people here who don't like to see the growth, but we kind of feel like it's inevitable and that we just have to be responsible about it. So we hope, we think this is a wonderful opportunity for the council to impact future generations with useful and quality growth. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Yes, ma'am. Okay, I'd actually, you're there, you're there. Sorry. I apologize, that's on me.
Hi, I'm Ruthie Graham, and I'm a resident, my husband and I, of Magnolia Lakes, and we have been for the past few years. And I'm here in favor of the grocery store. When I was here before, a few months ago, I told you that I've been a part of this community for 51 years, and that my dad was a senior lender and in one of our banks. And after our earlier presentation, I'm excited to tell you who he was and where he was, but he played a large part in the beginning of Woodside's success. So he was Bob Yarborough, and he was the senior vice president in charge of mortgage lending at Security Federal. He taught me to say it that way. I also said before that I lived in Aiken when downtown struggled, when you did not want to go into the alley, when the mall was the happening place you can't-
She's talking into the mic, I mean, she's got a soft voice, I'm sorry.
Oh, I can make it louder. Okay. So I've been a part of this community long enough to remember downtown when it struggled, when you didn't want to go into the alley, when the mall was the happening place to be, and when Woodside was just woods. And if you missed it, my dad was the senior vice president in charge of mortgage lending at Security Federal. And so from time to time, he would come home very excited about something to tell us. And one of those things I remember very clearly was Woodside, because he said things like, "It was going to be gated." There was nothing we'd ever seen here before. It was going to have an HOA and covenants and restrictions. And I could not even begin to understand what that was at that point in time. The other thing I wonder was, it's so far out. Why in the world would you put this neighborhood so far out of Aiken? The developers of Woodside knew, well, Aiken is continuing to grow that way. And the thing is, now I'm a real estate agent in Aiken. So I'm seeing that growth, and I'm seeing it from not in Aiken. 90% of my clients are not from Aiken. They're from everywhere else in this nation. And they're coming here for the horses and for the medical care and for the golf community and for the climate. So South Aiken is going to continue to grow, which means that Silver Bluff is going to develop. So piggybacking on what she just said, Woodside has done an exemplary job in developing and being exactly what it intended it to be. It was going to be in the beginning. I live in a home built in the late 90s. It has continued to gain value, as most of us, all of us in Woodside have. This is who needs to develop this. We're going to get a grocery store on Silver Bluff. It needs to be somebody who cares. We're going to get a strip mall on Silver Bluff. It needs to be somebody who cares. And the people who are part of the Woodside development, they care. They're either in our community, in Woodside, somewhere around us, or they're at least a part of Aiken. They have a vested interest in this. They have a vested interest in the way it looks and its success. So let's let them do it, because this is going to happen. So we can argue about it all day long, but the fact of the matter is, this development's going to come to Silver Bluff. And it can be done right, or it can be done wrong. And this is going to be the right way. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Graham. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am, sorry. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Tori McQuinn. I live at 1033 Hayne Avenue, Southwest. I don't really know a lot about the grocery store. I don't really have an opinion of if it's a good or a bad thing. But I think it'd be really beneficial to disclose who the grocer is. There's only a handful that have drive-through pharmacies, so I can kind of guess who it's going to be. But definitely think it'd be beneficial to the developer and to the council to like, raise the public opinion of the grocery store to disclose who it's going to be. And then also, I just kind of have to drop that the north side needs grocery stores. So, just want to drop that, and that's it.
Very good, thank you, Ms. McQuinn. I'm sorry. Let me catch right here, and then we'll come over there, okay? Yes, ma'am. I got you, I got Jerry next.
Good evening, my name is Deanna Carroll. I'm a local attorney with an office at 107 Pendleton Street Northwest. I've addressed you before on this subject. I've written you a couple of times. I know that you have my comments before you. My comments in the various letters that I provided to you provide very specific reasons why there are violations of your ordinances relating to the development as it occurs now. And I'll talk about that a little bit, but I think there's something more fundamental that I should say first. And most importantly, you are people of responsibility and power. And I know you to be in a place where you can make critical influence over what happens in this area right now. After today, that opportunity slips away from you. You, when you came here last time to look at this issue, you gave some direction. And I'd like to believe that when you give direction, you expect your orders to be obeyed. You expect your requirements to be fulfilled. You suspect, you require, and you expect that when you say it's going to take more to meet the requirements of the city, that that more is going to have to appear, or you're not going to be satisfied. I would respectfully say that your requests, your requirements, have not been met. I appreciate that the developers met with the neighbors, and they did. I represent John Veldman and Press Ray, and to be specific about who I'm here for, and they were among the people that they met with. But the result was not an accommodation that actually meaningfully addressed the neighborhood concerns. These neighborhood concerns are not going to go away. They're not going to go away unless you get that developer to come in here and act like they mean it. I heard a lady say here, "Oh, this is great, let's have these people do this because they care." If they cared, they would sit down, roll up their sleeves, and do what has to be done for what's in the best interest of the community, what's in the best interest of Aiken. They can do it. They moved that building 25 feet. That's not caring. Caring is rolling up their sleeves and really making changes that will address the problems, instead of coming up with new things. We didn't know about the drive-through pharmacy that's now going to be more or less in the yards of my client. Imagine how much more traffic, how much more noise, how much more light that is than we thought it was going to be the last time we're going to be here. There was a lady up here that said something like, you know, "If it's not this, then it could be something horrible, and mistakes will be made." No, no, you decide. You decide whether mistakes are made. You can stop the mistakes from happening now. That is your civic responsibility. That's what your position is about. Now, I'm not telling you to tell them no. I'm not telling you to tell them go away. I am telling you that I think that it would be appropriate for you to tell them that they need to do what they promised they would do. For instance, you told them- would do. For instance, you told them to meet, and I understood when you said, "Meet with these people," you had to meet and do something about what these people need. Respectfully, what they did was better, but only a token. They need to meet and do something about what the problems are. You also said to them that they needed to have appropriate elevations and drawings, et cetera, in order for us to have a real understanding of what they're doing. They don't have that, not yet, not the way they should. They have one facade drawing that only shows the grocery store, that removes what the relationship and inaccurately represents what the relationship will be to the houses. It only shows one house now. So in other words, you ask them to do drawings and instead they come up with something that misrepresents what is going to happen. That is not what you want. That's not what I heard from you. So I don't, I mean, it is awfully easy to come here and say, "We asked them to do X and Y. They did X and Y. Okay, bless it. Let it go." I understood when you said X and Y, you meant for them to actually do it, not say that they did it, and then come back and say, "It's done and should be blessed." We had a great elaborate discussion of fences a little bit earlier. Those aren't new fences. They're fences that are already there and are in very poor condition. My understanding is we are talking about the fences that Woodside had already put up. That's not fixed. Those neighbors knew what fences were there. They didn't invent some new fences since the last meeting where we addressed this. Respectfully, if you read my comments, you're going to see that there are violations of your ordinances. Respectfully, my clients are committed to doing something about this. But respectfully, if you're going to tell a developer that they need to do something to meet your requirements, I think you should make them do it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Carroll. Ms. Hawkins.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman. First of all, to Councilwoman Gregory, I appreciate the effort that you made to facilitate the meetings that did occur. I'm not going to repeat the issues that have already been addressed tonight. I'm sure if you're doing your job, which I'm sure you are, you know what those are.
Ms. Hawkins, I don't mean to interrupt you. Would you say your name for the minutes?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's fine.
Gary Hawkins, 344 Magnolia Lake Court.
Thank you.
When I came to Aiken 20-something years ago, we decided to locate in Woodside. And we were told that the estate area was the perfect place for us. We didn't, I'm not a golfer. We didn't want to be on the golf course. We didn't want our dogs harassing the neighbors. For 20-something years, we've enjoyed our home. My wife works every day in the yard. She takes pride in it. Our neighbors take pride in our neighborhood. What I'm concerned about is a fear I have. I'm 78 years old. I battle cancer. I'm concerned that the quality of my life is going to be impacted. Not by something I did, but by something that none of us had any reason to believe was going to happen when we invested in Woodside Development. It's Woodside Development now. The village has been a great addition to the area. I would not argue that. I go every day to the fitness center. But to think that we're not going to enjoy going out on our patio, having an evening drink, or having a cookout because of the concerns that people have brought up, I think is a valid concern. When is the personal quality of life, how do you measure that against what's being proposed? That's your decision. It's not mine. But I hope that you will think about how we're impacted by what's going to be occurring, if it's approved. And unfortunately, most people think it's already a done deal, which concerns me. I would hope that you're open-minded, you've heard the arguments, that you're considering what's the right thing to do for all of us who are going to be affected. Thank you very much.
In the back.
Mayor, Councilmen, women, I appreciate your time tonight. My name is Kevin Pethick. I live at 158 Knox Loop. I also recently placed a house under contract off of Richardson Lake Road, so basically you would come straight out of the development and go about a mile or so, and that's where I'll be. So I also am a business owner in the village. And in those capacities, I travel that road all the time. Prior to having a traffic light there, I would agree that there were some issues with people trying to get out of Richardson Lake Road turn, but since we've had traffic light there, I don't, can't even really relate. And as somebody who uses that every day, I can hardly even relate to the concerns that people are expressing about traffic. I think that's very overdramatized, because there's hardly any traffic there. No matter what time I'm coming and going, I don't have to wait any length period of time. It's one cycle. I might let two cars come by and then I go through. And I think the traffic study that I had heard about was given an indication that it was not a problematic intersection, and that with the improvements that would be made, that it would be the same, that it wouldn't be any worse. And trust me, this is a study on the developer as well, so I've done developments all over the southeast. These traffic studies are pretty accurate. They understand what's coming into a center. They understand how the traffic's going to flow, and I think that it's been very well addressed. The fire station's going to have a controlled light. It seems to me the developer actually has done a very good job of, first off, being a landlord and managing the village project. I think it's one of the better developments than Aiken. So we've got a reputation that we know about. People that are doing great things in the community, and I think they're continuing to do that. I think they've really given a good effort for your request to meet with folks and move the store and to put in fences and consider concerns about sound and lighting. And yes, I understand it's probably concerning to live nearby and concerning about the value of your home, but I would find it hard to believe that anybody's property value is going to be negatively impacted. And I think that the developer's working to try to account for any noise or sound barriers or things of that nature. So I would also ask you for people like Coker Day or Charlie Harts or others who are business owners in this community. We came here because we thought there was going to be a grocery anchor there. And it's very hard, as a developer, I can tell you this, to try to predict exactly what size that's going to be. You can say you want a 25,000, 30,000 square foot space or whatever you may want, but they have their prototypes, they have their sizes, and you don't get multiple opportunities. So when we have a very reputable developer coming to a very reputable development and doing all of the things that are in our ordinance to address traffic, address sound, address lighting, address fencing, then I think that you all are doing your job. I think you've done a great job, as you always do. I appreciate that, and I hope you will consider the developer's efforts to make this amenable to the neighborhood and would hope that you would support it. And I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pethick. Mr. Reynolds. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Pleasure to be before you, members of council. Bill Reynolds, 252 Old Market Street in the Village. I'm the president of the Homeowners Association, but I'm not here to speak for the homeowners or the board. I'm here to speak as an individual. The residents of the village that I've spoken with share some of the concerns that some of the other folks do that live on Magnolia Lake Road. We know there's going to be more traffic. We know there's going to be more noise. We wish we could have had a smaller boutique or specialty grocery store, but that's where the differences of opinion fall between us. We're looking at it from the standpoint of we've got a glass that's almost full. And unfortunately, other folks are looking at it as a glass that's almost empty. If you think about it, with all the activity out on Anderson Pond Road, it's just a matter of time until somebody's going to build a supermarket out there to service the people out there and in the village. And the question is, where's it going to be and what quality is it going to be? Having lived in the village for about six years now and worked closely with the developer, I firmly believe they're the best that we're going to get to develop a supermarket. Now, much has been said about the original concept of a 20,000 square foot specialty store. That's just not realistic, I don't think. That was a concept 14 or 15 years ago. You were on the planning commission with me, you were on the planning commission with me when, and when they first came to us for the application for the village. And they had a 20,000 square foot specialty store. Well, we had a specialty store in downtown Aiken, if you remember, not too long ago. Fabulous. Right next to the city hall where the Mellow Mushroom is. The doctor spent a fortune building that store. Meat market on the second floor, nice things on the first floor, and it didn't make it. There is no Trader Joe's in Augusta. Even with Evans and all of the buying power they have out there, Trader Joe's hasn't made it to Augusta. Whole Foods was there for a short period of time. They didn't make it. So let's be realistic. There's just, in today's economy, I don't think it's realistic to expect a 20,000 square foot specialty store. So we're going to have a 47,000 square foot supermarket with a drive-through pharmacy. And from my standpoint and from most of the people I've talked to, that is wonderful. It's a convenience. We can walk to it. We can bike to it. We can even go-kart to it. So it's terribly convenient. The other thing it's going to do is frankly, it's going to enhance our property values. And I think it'll enhance the property values of anybody on Richardson's Lake Road or even out on Anderson Pond. So we think it's a very, very viable proposition. We think it ought to be done. We're sorry that there's an honest difference of opinion between your citizenry, but that's what democracy is all about. And I know you'll make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Any other comments? Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Buzz Rich. I live at 210 Knox Avenue in Aiken, and I'm here on behalf of the developer, their attorney. I just wanted to respond briefly to some comments made by my esteemed colleague, Ms. Carroll. And I respectfully have to disagree with her. I think she is doing what good lawyers do when they have a bad case, is they even muddy the water and blow a little smoke around. That's what lawyers do.
Buzz, I'm going to ask you just to keep your comments to the issue, if you would.
Yes, sir. I stand rebuked. My comment is that she's implied that by passing this ordinance that you would be taking violation of some of your ordinances. I have looked at your ordinances and I respectfully disagree with her. You have an excellent city attorney sitting next to you, and if he disagrees with me, I would expect Mr. Smith to speak up. But I wanted to take that off the table. I don't think that there's any legal issues. The law is very clear that council has wide discretion in approval of projects such as this. And putting on my personal hat for just a second, I think it's an excellent project and I encourage you to approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rich. Yes, ma'am. Corey, you've already spoken on this. Sorry.
My name is Jenny Hart, and I live at 268 Coach Lightway, and that's in the village. I just wanted, after Bill Reynolds came up and spoke, I too am excited about the grocery store. I think it's going to be wonderful that I can just leave my home and go and shop without going to any other place. My concern, and I know it's going to be first class, because everything in the village is first class, and we have beautiful homes and landscape and all that. My concern is the traffic. When we were here maybe two years ago, we were talking about the apartments that were coming in on Village Green. And at one time, when we met with the developer, some of the residents asked if maybe the developer would buy maybe this property and let there be a cut through for the apartment people to come off of Silverbluff into their apartments. And of course, that was declined. I've lived in the village for six years, and we have a one-way in and a one-way out. After Benton House came into our village, I was leaving the village one day and there was a car coming in the wrong way, and that happened more than one time. We've had several accidents at the top of Silverbluff and Village Green at that red light. And that's a horrible place to turn left or turn right, because you can't see anything. I just want to know if the developer will really do a good traffic study and make sure that those of us who live in the village can be able to come and go safely and get to where we want to go. We have lots and lots of blind spots because of shrubbery, and it's difficult to see at times. So all I want to know is, and I'm asking you, help us to have a safe in and out, because I know the grocery store is going to come, and it's going to be one that, you know, we'll be proud of because of who's developing it. But that's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hart. Yes, sir. Mr. Moniak.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Don Moniak. I live north of Aiken. I want to talk first about this whole donut hole issue that's been raised many times during this debate, that if somehow, if this is not developed in this fashion, something much worse will happen. I find it to be rather alarmist. If this is going to be developed and it's going to require city services, you're going to have to annex it anyhow. That will be a requirement. That's the annexation ordinance. There's no way around it. Secondly, I asked Gary Bunker about this. And as you all should know, Gary Bunker is about as well-informed as any elected official in South Carolina. He said, "Depending on how these are measured, RC is the most restrictive county zone and RD is not far behind it." That's currently zoned RD. RD allows for other group living situations and multifamily. Both are well-described by their titles, restricted primarily to residential uses. Council 10 or 12 years ago turned down a proposal to rezone one of these parcels to allow for a hay baling operation. Primary reason was to reserve that area for residential uses. The county council rarely changes residential zones to more lenient zones. So let's just face it, this is converting residential to commercial under the guise of planned residential. And the county would not allow it. The county, just up the road from there, had a dispute over allowing somebody to move their home, move their beauty shop into their own home. That took three readings. There was argument over that. So I think you should quit disparaging the county while trying to pat yourselves on the back for doing such wonderful things zoning-wise, because it's not necessarily so every time. This proposal is weaker than the county rules. I want to talk about open space. Secondly, city of Aiken is weakening the concept of open space. Reallocating funds dedicated to open space to purchase and help develop a racetrack, horse racetrack undermine the concept of open space. Approving this proposal, which as you can see, just to the north there of the grocery facility, is a parking area. That's not counted as commercial area. It's not counted as open space either. It's unclear what it's actually counted for, but it appears to be in the open space category. What I do know is that just in that area between the park- What I do know is that just in that area between the parking lot and Silver Bluff Road, if you look on page 80 of the agenda packet at that map, it says open space. That's a buffer area. Buffer areas are not supposed to be categorized as open space. So, that's cheapening the value of open space. And vegetation is a buffer, that's number three. Mr. Baldwin talked about how lush it is between there and the residence. Well, lush in loblawli pine and longleaf pine are not a good combination fire-wise. I was in that area and observed that it hasn't had any management at all since it's been developed for over 10 years. I contacted Village at Woodside, said, you know, you should get a hold of the South Carolina Department of Forestry Commission and have them look at it, because, you know, you never know. As many people go through their recreation trail, alls it takes is one match at a wrong time of year, and you could have a fire and all that vegetation that you are claiming will prevent sound is gone. If you don't buy that, just go up on I-20 and look at the highway fire from 2019. This part of the world has a window of opportunity for high-intensity fires that last anywhere from two to six weeks every year. You get a good wind, 15 to 20% humidity, and you will have no trees left there if something gets going. If I lived in Woodside, I'd be concerned about that spreading into their lands. As I stated on September 26th, the fourth issue is that this is the only gateway you have into the city of Aiken that is a soft entrance. It's not obtrusive, it's not a bunch of fast food, it's not junky. It's a nice entrance, you don't have to worry about trying to fix the gateway approach. And then, if you look at this photo right here, look to the left at the gray area, it doesn't say out parcel. Go to the next page down, page 61. It's a different picture, it's hard to tell if it's even by the same company. You've got three sets of drawings in 20 pages from three different companies, and quite frankly, they don't match up with each other. So, it doesn't appear that the original concept designer is doing the design. The original concept designer for Village at Woodside does not appear to be doing all the design work for this particular property.
Don, that's 5:30.
Thank you. Yeah, well, I thought you were letting people go seven minutes tonight, Mayor.
Let one go because the other one on the other side.
I'm done, thank you.
Thank you. Very good. Any other comments? Yes, sir. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. My name is Dick Brown, I live at 133 Fox Trace Court. I was here for the last hearing, discovery. I have spent a fair amount of time, I've walked the property, listened to a number of the people here tonight talking about buffers and... I'm not a land developer, I own multiple properties in Woodside, and the reason I own them is because of the developer. The developer has shown me that they have the capability to take us forward. Now, I don't know exactly if someone else is going to develop this property, but if I had to, as a council, make a vote, I'd much rather develop this property for the sake of all of us in Aiken with a known property developer. And I don't think there's anyone that would think that Woodside was not developed in a thoughtful way. I think they've gone, met with the people that are affected by this. You know, it's kind of interesting to me when I see somebody that is objecting to a tennis court or a pickleball court, but they bought the property right next to it, and now they're objecting to the noise, and it's like, what were you thinking? So, this open space that these people are concerned with, and they have a rightful to be concerned, but the open space was open, something was going to go there, why not go with a known entity that will develop a property that we all can be proud of? And so, I am very much in favor, and I would hope that you would vote in that favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Yes, sir. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Brad Shell with Peach Properties out of Columbia, South Carolina. We're working with Woodside Plantation and Silver Bluff Development on this project, and wanted to come up here and take the opportunity to, you know, I think Kent did a great job explaining what the changes have been, as well as, you know, what we've tried to do to mitigate some of the concerns that we have heard. But I just want to, I guess, clarify maybe a few things that I think would be helpful. The, there was some talk of lighting, I know there's been concern about lighting from several folks, the illumination aspect of that, and Kent, I think, spoke briefly on that. The lights we're proposing are LED fixtures, they point straight down to the ground. Depending on final design, we'll have the ability to have, excuse me, shutters basically along the backsides to make sure we're not illuminating anything but the parking lot. That's, you know, illuminating into the woods and illuminating further is honestly a waste of electricity and not something, it's not good design. And the city of Aiken's requirements are for there to be no fewer or no greater than two lumens at the property line. And when we design this, we're going to be shooting for 0 to 2.5 lumens at the property line. And given some of the buffers we're talking about, it's going to be zero at the property line, it just is, because we're illuminating the parking lot only. Second, I know there were some comments about, I guess, the drive-through pharmacy and that potentially being a surprise to some folks. I know that when I spoke here last time, I did mention a drive-through pharmacy. If you look back at the various site plans that have been submitted at Planning Commission at the first reading, that pharmacy is shown there, so it's not an attempt on our part to obscure anything, it's always been part of the plan, it's always been there. Additionally, with the talk of the drive-through pharmacy, we have allowed space along that right side of the plan to do some buffering, landscape, evergreens to eliminate the lighting and potentially some of the noise there, too. It is from that drive-through to our property line, 400 feet to our property line from that drive-through, so it's further away than the truck well certainly. Additionally, when we design this, we are going to have to comply with all City of Aiken rules and requirements relating to stormwater, relating to landscaping, and lighting, among others, and you know, that's a process we have to go through. The traffic study, that is underway. Additionally, it's not a thing where you say, okay, here's a traffic study, check the box, we're out of here. That traffic study has to be approved by both SC DOT and the City of Aiken's Traffic Consultant to ensure that it is not delivering levels of service to intersections that would be unacceptable. And additionally, we also have to comply with Woodside, the village architectural restrictions. So, it's, we, to say we can just put up whatever we want would not be accurate. I know there are some questions about elevations, and I know we did submit elevations previously, and I believe those are within the package tonight as well, so... And, you know, with all that being said, if anyone has any questions specifically for me, I'd be happy to answer those as well.
All right, thank you, Ms. Shell, we may call you up.
Thank you.
Later on, thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Al Hunter, I live at 404 Silver Bluff Road, that's the intersection of Silver Bluff and Bypass. Last week, I just closed on a house at 288 Coach Light Way, so I'm looking forward to being over there, getting out of the traffic jam at that intersection with all the ambulances and the fire trucks, and, you know, it's a never-ending thing at that intersection of Silver Bluff. So, I'm looking very forward to having a grocery store, a pharmacy over there that I can walk or ride a bicycle to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Any other comments? Yes? Good evening.
Mayor and councilmen, councilpeople. My name is Jim Lachlan, I live on Coach Light Way in the village. I've watched this community grow for over seven years now. I bought, I finally bought a lot two years ago, and I moved in. I'm a retired pharmacist. As a pharmacist, I see the need for a drive-through pharmacy coming through there, because some people can't get out of their cars, and I respect that, because I have a hard time, too. But a pharmacy will be a bonus for us. I have all intentions of thinking that the Woodside crew is going to do a great job in their development, as they have done through the community that we live in. No two houses are alike, there's a difference in everything out there, and the people in there are superior. But I think you'll find the businesses in there, too, are doing a good business, they're creating traffic for the people coming through, and the development is just great. I say we continue with what these guys want to do, and I know that we'll be 100% satisfied with it. It's not about one or two people, it's not about, it's about a community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lachlan. Anyone else? Good input. 20 speakers for those who are counting. Any comments, questions from council? Councilwoman Gregory?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. I really liked, I can't remember who said it, I'm sorry, but I think this is a very honest debate, and I thought that was very nicely put. Everybody brings up a very valid point, and from the first meeting, I had some concerns myself, and I live in Woodside, so it's near and dear to my heart. So, I went to the first meeting with some of the residents, and I thought the concerns that were brought up at that meeting were so viable and so valid. And it's not every day that we have developers that are so immersed in our city, that care about so many aspects. And I felt pretty comfortable making a recommendation at that meeting. And I recommended that these citizens' concerns please be addressed somehow. And I really wanted the groups to speak after the first council meeting, the first reading. And this developer and this group, they took my recommendation, and really, I felt, were very engaged in wanting to address the concerns of the citizens. At that meeting, four concerns came up, four loud concerns came up. Proximity, noise, light pollution, and safety. And in speaking to the citizens that had issues with those items, I told them, I said, you know, those are viable concerns, push for a solution. And I really, I'll be honest with you, I wasn't too happy with the proximity part of it. I don't think it was moved, the building was moved enough. In a perfect world, we would have gotten a little bit more leniency there, but the effort was made. Was it good enough for a lot of us? No. But I understood the reasons why the building couldn't move any further. The noise was addressed. In fact, the meeting was pushed off a few times because they were so wanting to emphasize the fact that they were addressing the noise situation, that they went out and found a professional in that field with Mr. Veldman's recommendation about potentially putting up a sound barrier. And Mr. Veldman was very learned in that, and Kent and Pat were, they listened, and they found this professional that came and put in their hands, this is what you need to do to address that concern, and they presented it to the citizens. The lights was a concern, and it was addressed. I mean, they went into grave detail about lumens, more than I ever care to know, no offense, but I'm pretty comfortable that the light pollution will be contained on all perimeters. And then, safety, we discussed safety pretty at length, because that's a concern to me. We've had some breaches on the east gate side into Woodside, so I think that conversation's going to spark a lot more conversation just for Woodside as a whole, but they were able to address their, what they could do on their fence side. And I think there were two different heights of fencing with various points where it would not allow breaching. They discussed addressing any potential issues with the fence, I think they did something at the gate, I don't think, I know they did. I went back there, yeah, it's, you know, it's pretty, I mean, if I'm, I don't think like a burglar, but if I were to think that way, it'd be kind of treacherous to try to navigate that. So, that was addressed. And then, with the lights and the fencing and all that stuff, the pharmacy situation came up, and we discussed at that meeting, you know, light pollution in the winter, no leaves, no trees, thin natural fence, that's a fair point. So, one of the things we discussed and as a contingency would be a fence that would block the cars going around that may create light pollution into the magnolia area. So, I feel they addressed those points very well. Not to everybody's, you know, 100% want, but I thought they made a very viable effort. Stormwater was a major concern, that's something that I want to follow closely. We discussed the permeable parking lot, all those things, I think we really need to be careful with stormwater, we're having issues in Woodside on the, off of Whiskey Road side, water pouring into that back, so we just need to be proactive, and we'll make sure that the city of Aiken stays proactive in that regard. We have to make sure stormwater plans are sound. Same with the traffic study. But I go back to, and we all have different schools of thoughts here, but I'm very happy with what Woodside produces. We know what we're getting. A lot of people are in favor of this project. I just have one question, Mr. Rich addressed it, but I'm going to ask Mr. Gary again about confirming the lawfulness of this zoning to council, because I don't ever want this to come up into question.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Gregory, when this application is run through city staff, through the zoning department, Maria Multry and her staff do a great job of ensuring they check every block they need to check in order to bring this application properly before city council. I review that when they do it, and I'm confident that this matter meets all the requirements of our zoning ordinance and our city code.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, I appreciate that. The nature trail... The nature trail, I believe, will be rerouted. So that's not going away. So I think I touched on pretty much every point this evening. I appreciate you guys listening. I listened. Every development should have this collaboration at all time. It was, it's what, it's what we should do here in Aiken. So with that said, I will be supporting this project, Mayor, and I appreciate everybody coming out tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Gregory. Any other comments from council?
I have a comment.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
First of all, I'm happy that all of you all are here. We've heard some very, very passionate and caring points from each one of you. I happen to have been on council in the eighties. I know you all are going to say you don't look that old, but I've been sitting here for a while and have watched the pathway of Woodside development. And as I reflect back on those discussions and drawings that came to us and the plans that this development would entail, short and long term, and the distant future as well, a lot of planning and discussion went into a place that you all currently enjoy. And Woodside is a prime brand, if I can use that term, brand not just in South Carolina, but throughout my travels and there quite broad, I would, I will say that. But it holds there, the folks that have visited that area are too many. I have friends sitting in this room, and I say friends, on both sides of the aisle. And all of you have made points, some with passion, some wanting to protect what you move in, moved into, you moved into an area with peace and tranquility and you expect to leave this area with peace and tranquility. But I will say that in my personal observation of the folks that have been connected to Woodside Development, they have always wanted the best from the very beginning. And those folks are still involved, who continue to want the best because of people like yourself sitting in the audience. And that is what you demand. But that is what we all demand within our city, a city that we love. And so given that, and I've heard from some of my very, very close friends, and I share some of your perspective as well, but given what I expect to come to this area, and I don't, I'm certain, I will say that I, I don't think, I'm pretty certain that I will not be disappointed. This is going to be a huge showcase for the City of Aiken and for many of you. And as we approach different phases in our life, we look for services in a different, in a different way. I used to shop over, run over to Augusta, I know that's terrible to say as a city council member, but I did, and think nothing of it. And as I live, my family, I've been here more than 50 years, and as we live in this community, we accept the value of being able to access services close by. And I think many of you are looking for some of those services as well. I will support this this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Price. Councilman Jerdo.
It'd be a wonderful world if all of us agreed on everything 100% of the time. But that's one of the great things in life. We have opinions and we can share them and we don't get into huge brawls and fights about it. The deal is, is that, you know, we can't set that up. We're going to have to vote one way or the other and somebody's going to be disappointed in the end that it didn't go their way. But I'm familiar with Woodside. I started back in the eighties, 85, 86, when it was developed. I worked for the developer. I was more involved with doing appraisals, but I still was there. And so I'm very familiar with all of that and all that they've done and all of Woodside. Woodside's an impressive place overall. Not without things that need to be fixed along the way. But I have full confidence that this, in the end, will be great and I will support it.
Thank you, Mr. Jerdo. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Broll.
Mr. Reynolds spoke earlier about being on Planning Commission with me, and that's right, we were. And this was planned back then. And I've lived here for 35 years, 36 years. Woodside was just a pup back then. But they have remained true to what they said they would do. They have been good partners in development of quality residences. I remember when the village was being developed, there were lots of people that did not want the village. And I think that it's proven to be a good development. I think they will remain true, they will do the best they can do, and I echo many of the sentiments that have already been said, so I will be supporting it also.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman.
I echo what my colleagues have all said.
Microphone.
I echo what my colleagues have already said. They all, everyone out here tonight made some good points, very thought-provoking conversations. I too know the developers and I know a lot of you in the audience. And I know your concern is what's best for you and your family and just like this gentleman said, the quality of life. But I can tell you, Woodside, and you already know this, is a premier community and it will continue to be a premier community. And I know these developers, they care. Some of them live there, some of them don't, but they've been connected to this neighborhood and they want what's best. And I will support this project as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
I guess I'm the only one that hasn't said anything, huh?
Don't feel any pressure, Mr. Walts.
Feel a little pressure here. I'm not sure that I wasn't chairman of the Planning Commission. I think I was chairman of the Planning Commission. Bill, you may remember when the village came up, but we had concerns about what it was going to be like. And I've known since the years have gone by, Woodside has always gone beyond what they told us they were going to do. They told it was going to look good, it was going to look better than good. And they've always been there. They're not in the business of devaluing people's property. They're not in business of hurting people's property. It does them no good if this isn't 100% successful. So I think we can anticipate them coming out and doing a good job. I think their intentions are good. Some of us may not like the size of it, may think it's a little too big, but heck, there's a lot of places in town I thought were too big before and now they seem small. We've got to continue to grow and this is one place to grow. That part of town could use a grocery store. I think it'll be highly successful. And I look forward to seeing what Woodside's going to put out there and how they're going to do it. So I will be supporting it. And I start at with Ms. Broll, Mr. Reynolds, we all started doing the village back then and we're going to continue to help and support it. So I will be supporting it too.
All right. I think that's everybody.
Ms. Matt, make one quick statement.
No, ma'am, I'm sorry. You've already made your comment. Councilwoman Price.
I just want to comment on the entire audience and your civility. And we've been to seminars discussing the civility. And though you were on opposite sides, some of you, the respect and the civility that you demonstrated in this room is first class. You deserve a round of applause. I've got to applaud, got to applaud you.
Very good. I'm glad I let you speak again. Thank you, Councilwoman Price.
Can I say something else?
All right. I think we're going to call comments to an end at this point. Very good. Before council at this time is the second reading of an ordinance to annex 4.72 acres on Silver Bluff Road and Village Green Boulevard and zone the area planned residential PR and amend the concept plan for the village at Woodside. All those in favor on second reading, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous from city council. Do want to thank everyone who came to comment on that. The input was important in the decision process. And we'll give a moment for the exodus to occur.
Want to take a five-minute stretch, Mr. Mayor?
I think, I think I'll probably go in a few minutes if you need to, do you need to? Yeah, yeah, we'll take five. Jim, Jim Locklear. We're going to call our meeting back to order. Before us now, item number three, Old Business's Second Reading and Public Hearing of an Ordinance Accepting the FY 2021-22 Audit by Title and Ordinance Accepting the Fiscal Year 2021-2022 Audited Financial Statements and Authorizing Variances to the Fiscal Year 2021-2022 Budget Ordinance. Is there a motion?
I accept one.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Diggs. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Walts. Comments from staff?
Thank you. Our auditor has prepared the financial audit and statements required by state law and city code. The auditor partner reviewed the audit with council at a work session prior to the November 14th meeting and reported that the city received an unqualified or clean opinion with no material weaknesses and no instances of non-compliance material to the financial statements. This is before you for second reading this evening, approval of the fiscal year 21-22 audit.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Beanbo. Appreciate that. Any comments from the audience? Comments, questions from council? Hearing none, all those in favor of the second reading, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Thank you. Moving down to item number four under Old Moving down to item number four under Old Business. This is the second reading and public hearing of an ordinance for adoption of the internal building, international building codes. By title, an ordinance to amend chapter ten, section twenty-two of the Aiken City Code to incorporate the 2021 additions of the International Building Code with modifications, International Fire Code with modifications, International Fuel Gas Code with modifications, International Plumbing Code with modifications, International Mechanical Code with modifications, International Energy Conservation Code, the International Property Maintenance Code, the International Residential Code with modifications, the International Swimming Pool and Spa Code, and the 2020 edition of the NFPA National Electrical Code with modifications. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion, but I would like to ask a question.
Okay, so we have a motion from Mr. Walts. There's a second?
I have a second.
Okay. Councilwoman Broll? So we have a motion and a second. At this time, it'd be appropriate to ask a question.
I, I think that these are fine to approve and all, but at our last meeting, our head inspector was asked, have you read these? And the answer is, no, I have not read all of these. Has anybody read these to make sure that we're okay on all this?
Someone from the state has told us these are the codes we need to adopt. In, in the event we want to comply with state, state law.
So we're complying with state.
And so if we, if we want to have an international building code, this is the version we have to approve. And that's, that's done by state law so that this is, um, um, it's the same wherever you go in the state of South Carolina.
Okay. No, I knew that. I just wondered if anybody from our point had looked at them.
That was the same answer or explanation given at the last meeting.
There's volumes.
I would hope somebody looked at them.
All right, thank you. With that, we'd open up. Any comments from the audience? Comments, questions from council? Hearing none. All those in favor of the second reading of the ordinance for adoption of international building codes, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Thank you. Moving down to new business. Item number one, this is a first reading of an ordinance to annex property at 404 and 408 Silver Bluff Road and zone it general business. By title, an ordinance to annex certain property located at 404 and 408 Silver Bluff Road and to zone the same general business GB. Is there a motion? All right, thank you. Councilman Jared O. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Price. Comments from staff?
Thank you. The applicant is requesting annexation of 404 and 408 Silver Bluff Road, which is approximately 1.69 acres and zoning it as general business. It is located at the northwest corner of Hitchcock Parkway and Silver Bluff Road. The requested zoning of general business is consistent with surrounding uses and city zoning. The planning commission has reviewed this request for annexation at their November fifteenth meeting. The commission voted four to two with one member not present to recommend that the property be annexed and zone general business with the condition that a transfer of ownership occur within 180 days. This is before you tonight for first reading. And it is, I guess, the proposed use is for a car wash.
Thank you, Mr. Beanbo. Any comments from the audience? Yes, sir.
Again, my name is Al Hunter, and I'm the owner of 404 Silver Bluff. We've been, it was Hunter Mortgage. My wife and I just retired in January. And my son took it over and changed it from Hunter Mortgage to Assurance Financial. And this is the, probably the, we have four letters in the tent for this property. Two of them were for gas stations and two for car washes. We've had the property on the market for about five years with different realtors. And we're looking forward to retiring and moving to the villages, but I think it's a great asset. It's an upscale car wash. It's called Title Wave. If you've seen the pictures of it, it's a, it's a nice-looking project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me. I own property up the street. I think I'm gonna recuse myself for this.
All right, sir.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if I can make some comments. I have a few concerns about this potential development. And I'm gonna use that storage unit off of Silver Bluff. When that particular development was presented to us, never in a million years did I think it was... I wish I had been more, I guess, in tune because it's just too close to the road. It's gigantic. It completely changes the aesthetic of Silver Bluff, which I do believe we need an overlay on Silver Bluff because we have one on Whiskey Road. We do not have one on Silver Bluff. But I, I just want to ask planning more specifics as to the proximity to Silver Bluff and Hitchcock? Because I don't, obviously that was not taken into consideration with the storage facility on Silver Bluff right now. So I, I really want to get into that detail if you don't mind.
So as far as their, or, or yeah, as far as like landscape setbacks and things that, like that, they're actually defined within our zoning ordinance based upon their width. So they are actually, they're, they're compliant to have a fifteen-foot setback, which would be on Hitchcock and on Silver Bluff. Now their access, obviously, is gonna be in Old, Old Town. They will not have access on Hitchcock or Silver Bluff Road. They also have to comply with the general business setbacks. I don't know if there's one specific thing you're concerned about?
What's the prox, besides fifteen feet, what's the proximity of this potential development to the streets?
So they will have to deal with, just one moment, I can tell you the exact setbacks on this. Just one moment. General business. Let's see. I lost it. I believe it's twenty-five foot setback, but I want to double check here.
I couldn't, I couldn't.
Front yard is thirty.
Is the front, the Silver Bluff side?
So they technically have three fronts. They would have a front on Hitchcock, Silver Bluff, and also on Old Town. So they would have three front yards and one side setback.
And then behind that is?
Behind that is an apartment complex, residential multifamily, low density, I believe, is the zoning.
Excuse me, if I could just piggyback on what, the egress is going to be there on Old Town, correct?
That is correct, and that is...
Will not be going in and out off of the busy highways, neither one.
No, ma'am. They will need to get an encroachment from, we do own, um, Old Town Road is a city road. They will need our encroachment.
And it's at the light. Old Town's...
That is correct. That is at the light.
It's at the traffic light, which makes it much safer. Can I? Is the building that's there now going to be, stay there, or is it being taken down?
So there are two buildings, two structures right now that will be removed.
And then the business.
Correct.
And so the brick house and the business, both are gonna be gone, and this will take its place, as I understand. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, that...
Ms. Gregory, did that answer the question you were looking for?
Not really, but there's, there's just a lot of questions I have on this. On the zone, the zoning in particular, it's Residential Conservation District.
So this is under, yes, make sure I tell you.
And so we're wanting to change that into?
No, I'm sorry. It's UD. The county zoning is UD. That's urban development.
Am I on the wrong?
No.
It's not in the city.
You're simply asking for annexation at this point.
I don't know if I'm misreading this, but I'm just, I'm looking at memorandum. I'm just confused about...
So the current county zoning is urban development, which is actually their, in essence, their commercial zoning.
Okay, sorry, I was on the wrong one and got really confused when I saw that. I mean, I still have those concerns.
Sure.
Um, and Councilwoman Broll addressed one of them, the egress and ingress and that on those two. So a concept plan and all that wouldn't come to you till when?
This does not, um, since we do not have an overlay district, as you mentioned, uh, this will not require a concept plan submittal. Because it is an area that does not require, and does not have an overlay. It would come in with general, just general business zoning, and it goes through an administrative review only.
And understand, I don't have a problem with the development. I just have a problem with how it will be placed on that property because of what... I see it. It's on page nine. Is that the one you're talking about, Ed?
Yeah, no.
And, and that's what causes, that's what concerns me.
That's why I asked the question about if those buildings were gonna stay. It's gonna be placed long ways according to this drawing.
Yeah. What concerns me is if you look at the drawing and the way, I mean, it's, I'm assuming that's gonna be Hardscape that's completely up, budding up to Silver Bluff Road.
No, they have to have a, they will have to have a fifteen-foot setback landscape buffer.
What's the, uh, uh, buffer on that storage facility? Do you know off the top of your head?
That was a planned residential, so, um, minimum was ten, but I think it was far more than that. I want to say at least twenty, twenty-five. Yeah.
I'm just very concerned about the way this...
All right.
It's a major area. Anyways, I don't have any more questions. I just think we need...
Very good. I want to go back to the audience because I, I never did close comment from the audience. I want to make sure everybody had an opportunity, if you wanted to speak on this. Yes, sir. Good evening.
Good evening. Um, my name's Alex Perry. I'm 1141 Dixon Road. I'm here on behalf of Title Wave, the potential developer. Just in case you had any other questions that I might be able to answer.
Sure.
Or provide you any sort of...
Ms. Broll?
Comfort.
Yes. Were my questions and what I said, that's what's going to happen, that...
Yes, ma'am.
Placed according to your drawings.
Yes, ma'am. And you'll, you'll end up with really more of a thirty-foot landscape buffer there because we're not putting any parking or anything along Silver Bluff, so...
Because it looks like parking, so thank you. So that's...
Yeah, so the building, which, you know, to me is a more aesthetically pleasing thing, will screen the covered parking stalls, which are where you would vacuum your vehicle out. And so we typically lay it out to put the building to help screen, you know, kind of the people over there vacuuming their cars out. That's the reason for it being laid out that way. And we do pride ourselves in, you know, our landscaping and our, our business, you know, we own, operate, develop. So it's not like a franchise. We're gonna come in, develop it, and leave. Um, you know, Mr. Blackstock takes a lot of pride in making sure that he's got the nicest-looking business in town. So I'm sure if you go to other sites of ours, yes?
So would this be...
It's your microphone.
Excuse me. Would this be similar to Lulu's? Will it be the drive-through?
It is an express car wash, so you don't have to get out of your vehicle. You pull up to the panky ice, let your wash, then you just put your car on neutral, pulls you through, and you exit. You have the opportunity to use the free vacuums that are there. It'll look a lot nicer though.
Price comparable, yeah, it is.
Is that area gonna have sidewalks?
That would, honestly, you have to SC DOT. We don't have a, we don't have a requirement for that.
All right, any other questions from Mr. Berry?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other comments? Thank you. Any other comments, questions from council? Very good. Before us is the first reading of an ordinance to annex property on 404 and 408 Silver Bluff Road and zone it general business. All those in favor of first reading, please raise your hand. That's, um, Councilwoman Price, the mayor, Councilwoman Diggs, Councilwoman Broll, Councilman Jared O., vote for, opposed. Councilwoman Gregory with Councilman Walts recused. The motion passes. Thank you. All right, item number two hundred, new business. This is a first reading of an ordinance to annex property at 23 Russellwood Court and zone it residential single-family RS O-15. By title, an ordinance to annex property located at 23 Russellwood Court and to zone the same residential single-family RS 15. That sounds right. I think the O. might be a typo on that. RS 15. Is there a motion? Thank you, Councilman Jared O. Is there a second? Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Diggs. Comments from staff?
Thank you. The applicants and owners have requested annexation of the property, approximately eighty-five hundredths of an acre, and zone it residential single-family RS 15, which is consistent with surrounding uses and zoning. The planning commission considered this at their meeting on November fifteenth, and all present voted to unanimously recommend annexation and zone residential single-family RS 15.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Beanbo. Any comments from the audience? Comments, questions from council? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your hand. And this first reading passed unanimously. Thank you. Bless you.
Bless you.
I'll be recusing myself of item number three. Uh, one of the principals is a director of a board that I chair, so I'll be recusing and turning the gavel over to Mayor Pro Tim.
Mr. Mayor, I will also be recusing myself from this discussion. One of my law partners was involved representing the applicant when they purchased the property.
Guess we'll have to do a little rearranging here, huh? No, I want, I want Stuart beside me to help me out. I'll let Stuart sit beside me to make sure I do this right. Yeah, right. It's a warm seat, though. All right, mayor and our attorney have excused themselves because of conflicts of interest, so we'll continue with this now. Before us is the first reading of an ordinance to rezone property of Lawrence Street and Rutland Avenue to plan residential and approve a general concept plan. And Mr. Beanbo, will you read the narrative on it?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Walts. And also, we have Laura Jordan here, um, in lieu of the city attorney, should any legal issues come up. The applicant and owner has requested rezoning of three parcels consisting of approximately forty-nine point three-seven acres running on Lawrence Street Northwest and Rutland Drive. The rezoning request is from residential single-family RS 10, office institutional O. and industrial I to plan residential PR. They are requesting approval of a concept plan. The applicant is proposing to develop a three-hundred-and-thirty-unit market rate rental town home development comprised of sixty-eight buildings. A concept plan with elevations and project narrative have been provided by the applicant in accordance with the policy of council adopted in October two thousand and six regarding the residential development of large tracts of land and the provision of city utility services. The property must comply with the planned residential zoning. For any development in the planned residential zone, a concept plan must be reviewed by the planning commission and approved by city council. You currently have the three zone uses for the parcels. They're undeveloped with full or no tree coverage. It is proposed that the townhomes will consist of four to six attached single-family units with a mixture of one, two, and three-bedroom units. City water and sewer services are available to the site, and there is road access. The developer proposes amenities that include a clubhouse with party room, leasing offices, coworking space, outdoor eating and grilling space, pool and outdoor lounge area, multi-sport court for pickleball, volleyball, tennis, and basketball, children's play... pool and outdoor lounge area, multi-sport court for pickleball, volleyball, tennis and basketball, children's playground, dog park, centralized covered mail kiosk. The concept plan appears to meet the planned residential district requirement of minimum twenty percent open space with forty percent enhanced for passive or active recreation areas. The development will need to comply with our tree preservation and landscape ordinances. The landscape requirements, uh, the concept plan shows two entrances to the development with one on Lawrence and the other on Rutland. Only the entrance on Lawrence is shown with a divided planted median. Our LDR land development regulations will require that both entrances should have a divided planted entrance median. The developer will need to obtain encroachment permits from the South Carolina Department of Transportation for two ingress egress points. Our LDR also requires a sidewalk on both sides of new streets that are within one-half mile of a public school. The developers indicated that a sidewalk will be located on one side of each private road. In a planned residential development, a monument sign of not more than thirty-two square feet and no higher than six feet is required at each entrance. A traffic study has been submitted to DOT and the City of Aiken's consultant for review. The planning commission heard this at their November fifteenth meeting, all those present unanimously voted to recommend to council the approval of the rezoning to plan residential with the following conditions and approve the concept plan. First, that the open space comply with the City of Aiken zoning ordinance. Second, that the structure is closer than ten feet to the perimeter, that no structure is closer than ten feet to the perimeter boundary and that the development comply with the City of Aiken's tree preservation buffer and landscape requirements. Three, that the entrances comply with the design guidelines in the LDR or a waiver is granted by city council. Four, that the sidewalks comply with the land development regulations. Five, that the developer receive encroachment permit approval from SCDOT. Six, that each entrance have a monument sign, no more than thirty-two square feet and should be no more than six feet high. Seven, that a traffic study is reviewed and approved by SCDOT and the City of Aiken Traffic Consultant and all recommended traffic improvements are installed by the developer. Eight, that the driveway requirements are waived. Nine, that the architectural materials used are expanded to create a more varied visual aesthetic. Ten, that a waiver is granted for the front-facing garages. Eleven, that the su, townhomes be no closer than fifteen feet of any other single-story building and twenty feet from any multi-story building. Twelve, that the applicant submit a revised concept plan listing those conditions of approval. And thirteen, that the applicant sign an agreement stating the conditions of approval within one hundred eighty days. And Mr. Mayor Pro Tim, this is before you and council, um, tonight for first reading.
Okay. Is there anyone from the audience who'd like to say anything? Come on up.
Good evening, council, Harrison Howell, um, ten thirty-three Hane Avenue Southwest. I'm just wondering, um, I, it sounds like the developer's gonna be putting sidewalks inside the development, but from what I can see, the, the only sidewalks on the actual road are on the other side, on the side where the high school is. So is there, is that, is that correct?
Let's find out, we have someone here who can tell us, I think. Come on, if you'll come on up. We might as well get somebody that can answer the question for you.
Awesome, thank you.
This, this is Todd.
Todd Glover, seventy-eight Fulton Street, North Augusta, um, to, to be clear, I'm part of the land ownership. We are not the developers of the property. Um, part of our purchase and sell agreement is that we get the land rezoned. Um, but part of the requirement, to answer your question specifically, um, part of the requirement that was, um, added from the planning commission was that there be sidewalks on both sides of the street within inside the development.
So they haven't been drawn in yet?
They have not, that was the concept plan that was submitted, but part of your requirements, um, that came out of the planning commission was that there be, um, sidewalks on both sides of the streets with inside, inside of the development.
Okay. Can I answer your question?
Uh, yeah, I'd just like the council to consider maybe crosswalks as well, I don't know if it's a, if it's a city-owned road or, or state-owned, but.
State-owned.
State-owned.
VOT has.
That's gonna be really important, I think.
Yeah, that'll be up the DOT.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to say anything?
You can take a motion first. Yes, little Don Moniak, north of Aiken.
Can we get a street address?
P.O. Box.
Street number.
One twelve Vacluse, South Carolina, two nine eight five oh.
But is there a street number we can put with it? We don't have an address for you.
I'm not required to give my address, you can look it up online. Um, I have some questions. It's listing retention ponds, are these retention ponds or detention ponds? I'm just curious, because there's quite a few retention ponds listed in the graphic, like six or seven of them.
Do you know the answer?
I think it says retention. I was just curious.
What, what do we need?
Because I wanna point out that this.
It can be either, the only difference is whether it can be counted as open space or not, so it can be either, we don't necessarily.
Actually, the difference also, according to the stormwater manual, is that a detention pond, you're required to have a a source that it's going to, it's gonna be, it's gonna go to surface water, whereas retention pond does not go to a surface water source.
We're at the concept stage, this is something that would review at the site and when, actually, when the engineering is submitted. So obviously, they're gonna have to comply with whatever stormwater requirements are required by our engineering.
Because you have stormwater, it says stormwater, doesn't say retention or detention, and it is right next to homes. So it raises a question as to whether that is open space or whether it's, if it's detention ponds, it can't be open space, right? And if it's a retention pond, it can be open space?
If it's.
If it's a detention pond, it has to be fenced, and if it's a retention pond, it does not have to be?
Can I answer?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. They, they can be either, detention ponds can, again, as I said, stated, detention ponds cannot be counted as open space unless they are shallow enough to be planted. If they are retention ponds or duck ponds, in those cases, they can be counted as, as open space. If they're detention ponds with a, a certain slope or depth, they will have to be fenced, they will also have to have landscape shrubbery around it. Again, we can confirm this, it can be either, it's still, as long as it's compliant with our stormwater regulations and we will confirm that at the, um, site and landscape review phase.
I, I ask this because it is right next to county property, this is on the city limits. So it's always important to ask, how is it going to affect people who don't live in the city, who don't have a say in the matter? So that should be considered.
Well, they will be considered when.
Yes, just wanna make sure. My other question was, it said there's gonna be a tree survey, now there's only ten acres that are forested there, ten or twelve. And so why hasn't there been one already when there's so, when, there's only a quarter of the property that has to be surveyed? It looks like you, from the aerial photos, there's some pretty substantial mixed hardwood forest down there. And it looks like, according to this, it's right over there on the right, that's where the, uh, forested area is, it looks like you're just gonna clearcut it. So how does that fit into your tree preservation ordinance?
Again, I don't think it's required at this point in the process.
Not at this point in the process, but they will have to do a tree survey for whichever portions actually do have trees.
Okay. And the other question I had was about the sidewalks, which he asked already, so that covers it. But he does, he does raise a good point about the crosswalks, because it's right across from the high school, this is a pretty ideal place for somebody who wants their kids to go to Aiken High. And, and you know, there's a lot to be said about this development, too, they, they've got, they've got a playground, they've got a dog park, they've got sidewalks, they're gonna have a perimeter trail. Um, the only question is, is whether they really are going to have twenty percent open space or not. Because it's unclear.
They will have to.
On that, whether there's, there is going to be.
They'll have to meet that requirement.
They will have to.
Yes.
Yeah. It doesn't look like it there. Thank you.
Well, this is preliminary. Anyone else who'd like to speak or say anything?
Wanted to mention a couple of, um, potential waivers that were mentioned in the narrative that were not a part of the, um, summary that we wanted to point out. First one is on page four, entrance medians. We felt it was important to have two in, ingress and egress, one off of nineteen and one off of Rutland. The one mentioned, um, off of nineteen does not have a median drawn. Part of the reason for that is we're not sure after we go to DOT whether or not they're gonna actually allow us a full movement there. We're not sure if they're gonna allow, because it's, that turn lane as you're coming in to Rutland starts about that point, so we're not sure if we're gonna be allowed a full movement there, so. Could possibly be that we're, uh, only have right in, right out, right, uh, or right out there. So that would make it difficult to, to put a median there if you only had right out, um, without full movement. So the reason we would request, um, some late leeway, perhaps you could provide it with the staff, is if DOT limits a full movement turn lane there, that, that a median not be required.
We can make that adjustment.
Because you would only have one lane.
We can make that adjustment.
And as far as a crosswalk there to the school, you'll notice there's a, a grand entrance, it's planned there with, with a planted median, but it was aligned with the driveway for Aiken High School. My guess is, once that traffic study comes back, um, there's gonna be a requirement for a signalized intersection there, so you would have crosswalks in a signalized intersection there, so, um, that's, I'm probably ninety-nine percent certain that's what will come back as, as a requirement of that traffic study. The other item was the, um, page six, top of page six, the facade variation. The length of the building, none of the units have more than six, um, units in them. But they are full, full family units, they, um, each unit has a double garage. These are intended for young families, um, which is a part of your comprehensive plan, your comprehensive plan actually addresses the, the lack of workforce housing in, in this, um, city. And so these are nice, very nice units with double garages, market rate. But because of the size and each one having a double garage, they will exceed the hundred and fifty-foot length.
So even the one bedroom, that's a.
Yes, they all have double garages. Um, so the, each unit averages about forty feet in width. So obviously, if you have six units, it will exceed the, the hundred and fifty, um, foot minimum there, so we would request a waiver.
Did this come before planning?
For that. It did, actually, in the narrative, it said that the, uh, a waiver may be needed, but it was not included in, in the summary at the, at the end that, uh, the city manager read.
It was not addressed or in the planning commission.
Okay.
It was just, just in the narrative.
Okay.
So we'll make note of that for our second reading and public hearing.
Second reading, you'll have to, we'll have to have an answer. We'll have to come up with an answer by second reading.
Okay, fair enough.
You're asking for, um, a variance from the facade variation, is that right?
We're asking for a waiver not on the number of units, the number of units will not exceed six, but we're asking for a waiver on the hundred and fifty-foot maximum.
Alright.
They have several, um, different models that they can plug into that, some are as, as small as a hundred and seventy-seven, some go out to two hundred and forty, depending on whether they're two-story or single-story. But this being a concept plan, basically what you have there are footprints, not, uh.
What's the square footage?
They range as well, um, I'm not as versed on those, um, I, I wish the developer were here, but we were not able to, uh.
Understand.
Had a mix-up.
No problem.
But, uh, I apologize for that and certainly can provide that before, before second reading.
Any other questions?
I just have one, Mr. Jared. Um, other than the ones you just mentioned, Mr. Glover, are the thirteen conditions, you have no problem with those?
None.
Okay, just the ones that you recently.
Wanted to have the additional two added, yes.
Alright, any other questions down here?
I don't have a question, just a comment.
Comment's great.
This is much needed i- in this area of town, and I wanna thank, um, the developers and yourself for moving along with this. Thank you.
Lot of potential on the north side of town.
It is tremendous.
We've been knowing that for a while.
Nobody's been listening.
Such a comprehensive, uh, project, too, like it just includes so many great, um, aspects and, um, I mean, I personally think, you know, wavering, issuing a waiver, I mean, it still keeps the density the same, so that's the key, right, so.
The other thing is to give incorporated safety with this, with those garages and given the, um, flow of traffic in that area, you have a school across the street, um, lot of great components there.
I have one question for you, but there'll be an HOA that requires people to park off-street in the garages?
It won't be an HOA because these will be rental units, so it'll be controlled by the company that, that develops, but they, they will have, um.
Parking requirement?
No on-street parking. And, and required to either park in the driveway or, or inside of the garages.
Will it have onsite property maintenance?
Yes, one of the, one of the great things about this company is that they don't build and flip, they build and, and keep. And so they, they have a very good, um, track record of maintaining and managing their properties. They have one that is ahead of this project in Ocala, Florida, very nice project, if, if you wanna look that one up, but, um, similar concept, obviously different look with different materials, which I know is addressed in, in this, but, uh, very well-maintained properties.
Let me just say that as we look at, um, as we listen to comments about why there are not more grocery stores, grocery stores on, uh, that part of town and why, um, we don't, where there's not, why is there not a hotel? With this growth span, with these residents, that is only the planning, uh, effort of, of seeing some of these things that we wanted for some time in this area, so.
I know there's a plan on the other side of the county building on, on the, um, um.
As you head west, yeah.
Then there's one a little further up on nineteen from this one, and so.
It's coming.
Retail follows rooftops.
Yes.
Yep, more rooftops, grocery stores follow.
Exactly.
Been telling Gail that for years.
And maybe we'll get our wish.
Yeah, no, with, with the development that's coming, it's gonna happen now.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tim, I'll call for the question.
Okay.
I move that we adopt, um, approve, I should say, the rezoning and concept plan and the conditions with it. Uh, and schedule it for the second reading and public hearing.
Alright, so let me read this back one more time for city council consideration, is the first reading of an ordinance to rezone forty-nine point three seven acres on Lawrence Street Northwest and Rutland Drive to plan residential. And approve the concept plan with the conditions recommended by the planning commission and the ones that we've added to it. With that being said, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand.
Need a second.
Need a second, second.
Oh, I thought we had a second.
No, I, I made the motion.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
You're, you're, you're newbie, but second.
I don't get paid enough for this.
I know, I know.
I'm gonna get demoted. Anybody gonna give a second, since we've been so.
That, that second.
What?
Jaredo.
Jaredo, we got it, okay.
Yes.
Jaredo got it.
Don't confuse it.
I've read that, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, the ayes have it. Done.
We're done.
You're done? Did you finish all of them?
No.
Yeah, we did, you're done, thank you.
Todd got mad and left, so.
Everybody enjoy their papers.
Alrighty, item number four under new business?
All righty, item number four under new business. This is the first reading of an ordinance to rezone property at nineteen oh five Whiskey Road to planned commercial and approve a concept plan. By title, an ordinance admitting the zone of real estate owned by Realty Income Corporation from general business to planned commercial PC and to approve a concept plan. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Jared O. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Gregory, comments from staff?
Thank you. The applicant is requesting rezoning of a parcel that's a little less than two-thirds of an acre, point six-three-nine of an acre, nineteen oh five whiskey from GB to planned commercial. Location of the former Pizza Hut restaurant. He's also requesting, the developers requesting concept plan approval to construct a retail store on the site. The existing building is proposed to be removed and the lot redeveloped. The building will be demolished that's currently there now. In its place will be a three-thousand-square-foot retail building selling bedding and mattresses. The concept plan shows that adequate parking spaces will be provided. The existing ingress and egress on Whiskey and an existing ingress and egress connected to the Village at Whiskey Shopping Center parking lot will stay. The SC DOT has confirmed that the use of the current ingress egress on Whiskey Road is acceptable. The projected number of trips is almost nineteen per day, so a traffic study will not be required. There will be a minimum of forty-nine point six percent open space when the site is redesigned. Planned commercial sites require monument signs on Whiskey Road. The developers indicated they would like to reuse the existing sign with the understanding that the pole portion be redesigned to present a hybrid pole monument sign with a wider base since it is within the Whiskey Road overlay district. The developer can either install sidewalks, street trees and curb and gutter or pay a fee in lieu. The planning commission heard this at their November fifteenth meeting. All those present unanimously voted to rezone and approve the concept plan with the following conditions. That the parking comply with the zoning ordinance, that the site and landscape plan comply with the open space requirements of the zoning ordinance, that the development complies with the landscape and tree protection requirements of the zoning ordinance, that the sign is redesigned with a wider base to present a hybrid monument sign that is consistent with signage previously allowed by city council within the Whiskey Road overlay district, that the project complies with the requirements of the Whiskey Road overlay district or a payment of a fee in lieu of installation be submitted. Six, that a revised concept plan listing conditions of approval and any changes required by city council be submitted within one hundred eighty days. And seven, that the applicant sign an agreement stating the conditions of approval within one hundred eighty days. This is before you today for first reading, public hearing.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Beanbo. Any comments from the audience? Yes, sir. Good evening.
Thank you all. My name's Zach Rogan at Crestwood Drive in Greenville, South Carolina. I'm the developer and wanted to introduce myself and answer any questions that you might have.
Very good, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Rogan?
Straight forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming in. Thank you for your patience on getting to your agenda item. Any other comments from the audience? Comments, questions from council? Hearing none. All those on, in favor of this first reading, please raise your hand, and that's unanimous. Thank you.
Mayor, I'll be excusing myself.
All right, Councilman Walts has recused himself. We move down to petitions and requests. Item number one, this is a resolution to appoint a designee to hear an appeal of a business license assessment. By title, a resolution to designate a hearing officer to hear a business license appeal. Comments from staff?
Thank you. An appeal has been filed in the case of Edward K. Walts and Holly H. Walts and S&amp;C Properties LLC versus the City of Aiken, South Carolina, and its designated business license official. Per Aiken City Code, appeals of business license assessments can be heard by council or its designee. Council would like to designate Kelly F. Zier to hear this appeal, and this resolution is before you to appoint this designee, Mr. Zier, to hear an appeal of the business license assessment in the case noted above.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Beanbo. Any comments from the audience? Comments, questions from council? Hearing none. All those in favor of this resolution, please raise your hand, and that's unanimous with the noted recusal of Mr. Walts. That's a good question, and I'm not quite sure.
So moved.
Councilman Jared O made the motion.
I'll second.
Councilwoman Price, I apologize. Councilwoman Price made, made a second. I feel like we should vote again on that. All those in favor of the resolution, please raise your hand, and that's unanimous with the noted recusal by Mr. Walts. Could someone, Councilman Walts? At this time, I'd like to open up the non-agenda items from the public. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes with a thirty-minute max. We open it up for comments at this time. Okay. I do want to thank everyone who's here still for staying and it was a long meeting, but a lot of business was conducted for our city, so thank you for being a part of that. With that, we move down to information section of our agenda, issues and updates. Anything for the good? Hearing none?
I was going to say the Christmas tree lighting is Friday, starting at six.
Very good.
And the employee awards luncheon Friday, the ninth, at twelve-thirty at Odell Weeks.
Very good. Thank you.
Yes.
I have one. If you are planning to participate in the Christmas parade.
Gail, turn, turn your microphone.
It's on.
Turn it so it's.
If you're planning to participate in the Christmas parade, the Downtown Development Association is the, is running it this year, no longer to JC. So if you would like to participate, go to www.Aiken Downtown Development dot com.
Very good.
Okay. It's Sunday, December the eleventh, at two o'clock.
When did the JC?
Thank you, Councilwoman Dix. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved, mayor.
All right. Councilwoman Gregory made the motion. Is there a second? Thank you, Councilman Jared O. I know you love it here, but.
And the lighting is on Newberry Street.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor of adjourning, please stand up. We adjourned.